Which is decent size. So it's making noise.
Well, yeah, I agree, but I don't, I don't think it's the noise that you would expect.
Yeah, I don't think that, a five ton unit doesn't make that much noise.
Right, yeah, it's like, yeah.
Unless it's on the fritz, but that's not.
Yeah, no, no, that'll not be, it's gonna be brain.
You gotta multiply that. I mean, I'm not talking just.
No, 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 that's actually what you're saying.
Right, especially if we got two with him and one right next door. On, on the other property that the haunted Halloween, which I'm fairly sure is not.
So as, as a board now, you looking at this, speaking of the noise, let's say the fans are probably the loudest in the compressor out there. You, you could suggest to them that they have it on whatever, north side, south, away from tenants, put on that side of the building. Cause they can rearrange their inside of the building any way they want, to have the building as a buffer to any noise.
But what is their proximity to sewer shores, which is, we just bumped up their tax dollars a lot.
Where, where, is TM Wentworth?
Well, TM Wentworth, and then you take, you go down sewer shores. Oh, where, where they've got it all cleared there, and you can see that beautiful view?
That's exactly where it is, yeah. No, no, that's, that's relative before that.
Okay.
Just before that, there are two other cleared lots.
Yeah, I, I saw the Porter Johns going in there, I think.
Yeah, we have a mailbox, 115, so if you drive by.
I'll go look. So their proximity to sewer shores, that those, because these people come for the summer, and they pay big money for these homes, and they're now going to be paying big tax money. So they won't even hear it there.
But they will be driven.
Well, not that much, he's only, he's saying he's only got four people in an house. You know, four growers.
Four growers, but supplies.
Yeah, so like the caregiver would bring, like a tenant of mine would have, they have, each have five patients. Or six patients, sorry. Uh, so they would deliver to the patient.
To their patients.
The patients are not allowed at the facility, like there's, like, the, the state mandates that no one is allowed in these tenant spaces. Other than the tenant or one designated employee. So the caregiver and one employee. That's it.
So now we've got eight people.
But we're not even letting them have employees, cause that's another additional security thing, I'm not letting them have another guy come in there. Cause that's, four other people have to vet. Not doing that. Not letting that happen. So like, like the town, I'm going above the state regulations, superseding that and having a more strict interpretation.
What if it's?
You're presenting the planning board with a business plan.
I, do you want one? I have one.
I think it would be proper to have, everything we've talked about.
Yeah.
On paper, for the, for the board to review would be nice.
I would love, yeah, I have, I have something like that, I have it at my.
You can either email it or, I can make copies for all of them.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
And just as a disclaimer, I just wanna throw it out there that it's, it's not something just solely for us to review, it's, it's not, you know, an approval.
No, I don't expect that, no, 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 no.
We're on your side or anything like that, I just, I just wanna throw that out to the universe, that it's not gonna hold any weight to making a decision one way or another.
Don't worry, I'm not worried about that.
Thank you.
Information is good.
Right, absolutely.
Any resources at all?
Sure. I'd love to share what I have, like a couple.
As medical growers, we have the same.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Power users.
Yeah, so that's one thing, uh, I wanted to mention, the, the, another benefit of this in the, the town is updated or upgraded infrastructure. So the street that I'm on right now, we're kinda going back and forth on whether or not we're gonna add three-phase power to our property. I spoke with Mike last week. It's really based off of whether or not I'm gonna put a second facility in the back. So, think about this, I'm willing to invest, I don't know, it's, they gave me a crazy number, it's more than what we talked about.
Is that right?
Oh, it, three times the amount.
Three hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, so I'm willing to put that much money into the town to get three-phase power. I know maybe only a couple people will be able to utilize it, but something like that, you know, I'm, I'm willing to invest in the town to get it.
Could you tell us what three-phase power is?
So there's two different, yeah, commercial power, uh, so.
So a typical household would have two eyes, say two eyes running to it.
Right.
With three-phase is a third leg. And, and, how, third, a, a good way to describe three-phase, let's take a motor, I'll take a bicycle.
Bicycle.
Baby steps. So, when you have a, a single phase, picture yourself trying the pedal up top here, trying to get that bike rolling. With three-phase, picture the, the pedal this way and trying to get the bike rolling. That's a good one, it's, it's a, just a logical way to explain three-phase.
It's a, it's a stronger service.
It's a more mainstream.
You only have to get, so a typical house has what, 200 amps service, right? Uh, so 200 amp service, single phase, is equivalent to, what, 100 amp three-phase? What's the conversion? So if you get three-phase coming in, don't you have?
I have the formula.
Yeah, so I'm an electrician, but like if I get 500 amps of three-phase, that's a ton of energy, a ton.
Yeah.
So is there a generator backup system?
It's actually equitable for them to run three-phase than it is to run single-phase.
So is there a, a generator backup system?
We will be required to have a backup system because of the security concerns. We can never have our video surveillance down for more than eight hours, our alarms down for more than eight hours.
And the lights can.
Otherwise we have to close.
So, so what are, what are the parameters of the, of the generator? Do you know what I'm saying? The, like, the, the noise, okay, so the fans don't make any noise, but a generator does.
Right, that would only come on if there was a power failure.
And there's a snowstorm.
We don't have snowstorms in Lebanon.
But then, you know, I think every other house has a generator, right?
Yeah, so this is for medical cultivation in Rhode Island. This is not recreational, but this is a good idea of, or it's a good starting place for what I believe will happen in Maine recreationally. So the way that they do the license here is based off of square footage, and I'm really only concerned with the cultivation aspect. So that's what this app, application's about.
It's not the application, it's the.
Oh, regulation, sorry. Um, that's what they're really talking about there, so it's, um, by square footage, which I think is the most, uh, common sense way of regulating this industry. A lot of times they try to regulate plant count, but plant count's easily manipulated. If you have more lights, the plants will produce more, so.
So they go off retail sales?
What was that?
Would they go off retail sales rather than plant recount?
Uh, no, what I think what they'll do is they'll do by square footage, so like.
Class A, class B, class C, class D.
Yeah.
Twenty thousand, fifteen, twenty five.
Yeah, and then, so a class A would be 5,000 and under, and that's gonna be half the licenses out there for those small mom and pop caregiver type people. So, that's, I just think that that's kind of a, a good estimation of probably what will happen up here, it'll probably be less stringent than Rhode Island. Just cause they try to be like Massachusetts and tell everyone what to do.
Regulate it to death.
Exactly, exactly, so. And, and, and I would even be open to potentially having the planning board visit my facility when it's up and running.
Oh, that's gonna happen.
Again, this would probably be like.
And voter selection.
And me. You know where I'm going.
So, just so you guys get a better understanding, and again, just to show that my, my door's always open to you people, I want to be a part of this community. And I want you guys to understand what's going on.
We, we have done that, uh, with some of the medical growers in town here, uh, where they graciously give some invitation, and we took them on. Took them up on that promise. In fact, we have a couple of other invitations pending right now, uh, to invite the planning board and board selection. And as we get further into this, then I'll, I'll organize this, uh, orchestrate it so that we, we can get all the, the, so you guys can go over there and visit a real cultivation plan.
And, and we're, and the only, the only caveat is, you guys have to like take a shower before you go into the facility.
And you have to.
Serious, I, I've seen them, they have to wear booties and hats and all.
So, that's the only thing, it will be a little bit, take a little time, there's only one shower, unless you're all gonna jump in there together, so. Same water, just wanna be organic here, you know? But that's the only thing. Yeah, a full, a full body suit, everything, so.
Welcome back to the show here.
Uh, just, uh, off the record type thing for you just a little bit. I know you was interested in being on the planning board. If you was on the planning board, you wouldn't be able to be as vocal as you are now, because you would be under your interest, you might wanna consider staying where you're at, cause you can be much more.
Yeah, no, I, I, again, I, I wasn't trying to, yeah, 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 yeah.
It's just a, it's just a.
Yeah, I wanted to have some, some, I wanted to add some industry knowledge too, cause a lot of, I keep using Massachusetts, I'm sorry. But they, the way that they come up with regulation is they just put people in a room that have no idea about anything, and they just kind of brainstorm. So that's what, like, I, I've seen that happen down there, and they don't, it doesn't work out well for anyone. I'm not saying you guys don't know, I'm saying I've just seen that happen, and that's why I was like, you know, I'm happy to add my, you know, two cents to anything, or try to help.
Mr. Chairman, can he indeed be a member, just not a voting member?
No, you can't. He would be on another discussion, nothing.
It sounds like we'll be better advocates.
Yeah, I'm happy to come.
Off of the board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause that, they pull it in court, that'd be a, a good interest, it would lose everything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, fine, that's a good point.
You're more than welcome to come to our meeting.
Yeah, no, I, I, I will, yeah, I will, I'm on it, yeah. I'm planning on it.
I, I'd like me alone to get all this information.
Yeah, and, and anything, I, I'm. I'll give you guys my information, if you have other questions you wanna send over to me, I'll give you my email and AJ's email. Send us questions, and we can kind of, uh, get a little email chain going.
I have it here, I'll pass it along.
Yeah, perfect, yeah. And I have my cell phone number there too, so if you wanna call me.
Do we have to make a motion to withdraw that or anything, or? I mean, just process wise, is there any way to withdraw that application? Now that, now that you brought that up.
Just rip it out, Mike.
Hold on, hold on, I think.
I know there's, uh, I just wanna respect the process, I, yeah.
It's video proof.
Another question?
Mr. Chairman?
Does the.
Okay, this is not my.
It's a workshop.
So power wise, it doesn't affect wiring, telephone?
Uh, no, it won't affect, no, 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 if anything, it's gonna, uh, increase the available usage of electricity. If I got three-phase, if I end up putting that money in, if we get the recreational facility, someone will be able to use three-phase on the road. That's pretty much the, it wouldn't impede on anyone, if, to your question, no.
It would enhance.
It would enhance, correct.
Structure within the town.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Well.
Right, which is going to, to what, to TM Wentworth?
Right, that opens it for a lot more in, commercial. So now you have to look at a different area of zoning. You're not talking about just 202 for your zoning boost right away. Now, if they put in three-phase power down TM Wentworth Road, you have to look really good and hard at, uh, at commercial zoning for TM Wentworth Road too. So your job just got even bigger, every five minutes in this meeting, it seems.
Look, this is the, uh, run of the mill?
Yeah.
Well, this is a fact, unfortunately, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Zoning's fun. It's like a sandbox, you can make whatever you want.
There's a whole new one thing.
Quip's me.
Yeah, don't get your foot in there, cause maybe it's gonna come out.
Yeah, I hear it.
Thank you for not doing any, uh, resident, not resident, but the, uh, resource protection area.
Right, yeah.
We have a mayor just worse. I have plenty of information, what about you guys?
I think I'm good for now. I definitely like the idea of being able to contact you guys with questions, and potentially, I'm not sure how you feel about it, but potentially have them come to another meeting.
Well, yeah, for sure.
I'm up here all the time, so just let me know.
Okay.
He might not be able to hear, but I'll be here, so.
Will you get plenty of water?
Yeah.
I mean, my property's so close to here, I mean, everyone's property's so close to here, but I could probably walk from where I'm at, if I really wanted to. Might get hit by a car, but.
Probably.
Yeah, there's no streetlights.
Or sidewalks.
Yeah.
And where are some reflectors?
Yeah, well, that's why I'm scared to go in the woods lately. I don't wanna go in there.
It was so quiet when I just went outside, I just realized I'm far outside of the city, I'm, I'm strictly a city boy, so.
That's why I kept.
I see a lot of stars up here. I was getting scared, it's really quiet out here.
There's no Freddie or Jason coming out of the woods.
Well, maybe.
Or Blackbeard.
Fisher cats. It's horrifying.
They are, they absolutely are.
Lot of animals down here.
I know, I got a little puppy, I'm scared to let him run through the.
We just caught that 42 pound bobcat on my property.
Forty pounds?
Forty-two pounds.
That's a jaguar, that's not a.
He was a big boy, he was something, eating my ducks.
Gee, that's probably why he got so big.
Yeah, he's gotta be pretty good.
Yeah, right.
For about three weeks, yeah.
Now I see why everyone has a gun.
Yep. Or two.
Or two.
Not gonna talk about the one behind the table. I, I have nothing else for these guys, I, I do really appreciate you gentlemen coming up.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
I agree, thank you.
Okay, great.
Any last words?
I think that might be important sometimes, don't make talks.
Yeah, there's my name and email.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I appreciate you guys letting me sit in, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, to coming back.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
All right.
Thank you. Nice meeting you too. Good meeting.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting.
Good to meet you.
I'm gonna follow you up.
Thank you, I appreciate you having me.
Not my fault.
Thank you.
So.
This was a good meeting, I, you know, we've been here two and a half hours, you realize that?
I know.
This is a good meeting. It doesn't even feel like it's been that long, it was a good meeting today.
Really?
Yeah.
Lot of information?
Well, I mean, it, it got postponed a little bit because I was delayed, but.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, overall, everything that we discussed tonight, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with you. I, I see where you're, you're at with the comprehensive plan, wanting to have funding there, but, uh, it, I don't think it's something.
We gotta pick our fights right now.
Exactly, it's picky battles.
I don't have a problem dealing with it, I just don't want.
Right.
Too much on our plate right now. Because if some division comes down, we can't turn our back on them.
Right, this, this is present, this is, this is time consuming.
And not to mention the fact, if we bring it before the people, if you give them too much, I'll guarantee everything will.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't blame them.
Overstimulation.
I'm overstimulated, not, we haven't even gotten to a vote yet. Yeah, you know, I'm the kind of person that when I go to a buffet, I'm gonna put a few items at a time, so that I can make multiple trips. At this point, I feel like we're at the buffet, and we're just keep piling a giant mound on and thinking we can finish.
But you need dessert.
I think we should have just a list, and we pick from that list, what, what fights we wanna fight.
I, I definitely say right now, at least my perspective, uh, I can't speak for everybody else on the board, but marijuana and the grandfather clause.
I would second that, yeah.
I agree.
I'm sorry, marijuana, what? Marijuana and the grand, grandfather clause.
Kevin's right, he's got a, he's got a serious problem.
Yes.
And another thing that I know Mike addressed to me at one point, you had mentioned the growth ordinance.
It's expired, so, but that comes under the list right here.
Right, I love it.
Yeah.
But, you know.
No, it's in, no, 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 not, not here, it's in the ordinance, it's not in the comprehensive plan.
No, they said the Gordon, the growth ordinance was killed because we didn't have a comprehensive plan, but we do have one. It's old and outdated.
Yes. But the only way it can be active, okay, is to resurrect it, that's why I used that word.
Is it dead?
Yeah.
It's, you used the correct word, it's outdated.
Is it dead?
Pretty much.
Has it been shot?
No, no, pretty much, is it dead?
And that's, I get speculation, Paul, I, I, in my mind, it's dead. It's out, this is 1991. Half of the stuff in this right here is not.
Our stuff?
2016.
But you have to use the growth ordinance.
Yes. Yeah.
Was that blocked?
Yes. Because it's resurrected. We probably should get some legal opinion.
That's where I wanna go, that's why, that's why I was trying to dig up.
Yes.
If we, if we can, if we did the growth off, growth ordinance once, not realizing that this was.
Right. Yeah, plus 1991, the growth ordinance expired in 2004.
Right, and we.
2014.
2014, yeah.
Yes, the growth ordinance was adopted, buck into the town in 2000.
Yeah, because of sunset clause.
And they took a sunset clause, and it basically saying, in 10 years, this one will expire.
Unless it's monitored every three years, and I hadn't been monitored, that's why, that's why it expired.
But like, uh, like, again. We rewrote it, but it was killed because we didn't have this debate.
Yeah, exactly.
So now, legally, we can use this as debates, even though it's outdated.
Then we re, we resurrect, we, we.
Make a re, the growth ordinance.
Yes.
Still, we worked on this.
Yes.
Okay, so the growth ordinance, yes. We already get a draft copy of that.
Which I can break.
Yeah, but, but it's not as bad as, as trying to resurrect this thing totally right now.
Just so the board knows, we do have one grandfathering ordinance.
Which one?
The signs.
Yep.
Because it says, anything after a certain date, which covers everything.
I have a copy of that now, I guess they have.
Yeah, yeah. The sign ordinance is the only one that has grandfathering clause.
Or the advertising ordinance, I believe is what it's called, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, well, they, it's, it's the sign ordinance, advertising, on premise, off premise, all of that falls in that, yes. Is the only one, page 12. We just, we ran across a lot, because we have a Dollar General that has signs, we have an house repair shop that has signs, so I've been going through that. I ran across that, and I said, oh my gosh, there's a grandfathering clause.
So what's, what is the requirement for signs? I don't know if you've ever read that.
Yeah. It's not, it's not a whole lot.
It's very basic.
It's, it's a size, some, one-sided, two-sided, illuminated, not illuminated, or lit, and it's very specific about how it's lit.
Yeah, LED lights.
Right, it can, but LEDs, you can have LEDs, and that's what, uh, that's, because everybody's going LEDs now anyway, so.
Yeah, LED's kind of a passant.
No flashing moving lights to be allowed.
Correct.
Which means you can't have the sign down at the fire station.
And what?
No, I'm sorry, let's get the, uh, electronic sign, oh, the, uh, golf place, download the mini golf place.
Read the end of it.
Says no flashing moving lights to be allowed.
Wait, wait, read the word, the grandfather.
Yeah, but that's my grandfather, he's only been here a couple weeks.
Oh, oh, really?
Two years.
Oh, is that right? Thanks, Paul. So.
Hey, you guys.
No, I just wanted to bring this point.
Yeah, no, no, I agree.
Isn't right, yeah, isn't right for.
I agree.
Right.
What's good for one? That's why we need to be very careful how we tread.
I wanted to put one of those signs out here, you do it every time you take a turn, huh?
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Before me, right?
Well, I was in the office.
Yeah. Yeah, but they got shot down right away.
Well, it's not a good part of what we're looking at.
Right.
Talk to me a little bit more about the grandfather and the lots, though.
The what?
The grandfather and the lots.
There is none.
Right. So there is two, two, uh, two acres minimum.
Yes, and as growth goes, if you wanna add another structure, you need another half an acre.
Correct.
Until you get to four, uh, four units, that would be your limit.
Four units should be subdivision.
Right, correct.
What was this about, where you have to evacuate houses? I didn't mention telling me to be evacuating houses because of grandfathering lots.
Oh, right, right, so. You don't even wanna go there.
Well, I'm just trying to get an understanding.
So, so, right.
What we're looking at here.
Right, I mean, the grandfather had to be looked at very, very closely, otherwise, half of your shoreline, uh, uh, lots out there would not, would not, uh, be.
Conform.
Conform, yeah, it's a good word, yes, conform, so then you'd have to, I don't really wanna use that word.
Do you have to go to the appeals board and have a law?
But if you do that.
You go to appeals board, there's, there's no allowance for them to be there.
Well, they can.
Appeals board can override ordinance.
Yes, they can.
They can do over the shoreline.
Right, but they can. They can, appeals board can, depending on, there's a lot of particulars, that, when, when you, in fact, the, the appeals board is a judicial board. It can make statutory judgments. It's not planning, but planning board is a recommended board. The recreation board is a recommended board, the, but the appeals board is a plus judicial board. They can make, they can, they can make decisions based upon the information that they've given. To give an appeal or, or a, a, an appeal, to give a variance, a variance. They have, they have.
Who drove, um, the water? They had to, we declined the name to the appeals board, and they moved it. That was shoreline.
Let me just. I'll be Cap West here.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, uh, let me, let me dig up the training material, I just got this last one.
Oh, sure, yeah, that'd be great, uh, um, but they have, they.
You guys, you guys have class from May, uh, December?
Yeah, no. So they have the authority to grant or not to grant a, uh, variance. As a, and, you know, here's, here's a perfect example. This fellow wanted to put up a garage, it's a shoreline stamp to begin with, okay? The first review of his plan was denied. Okay, because of the size, what he wanted to do with his plan, he was denied. So he had the right to, um, to, uh, reapply by amending his plan. He amended his plan, came back to the planning board, with the suggestions of the planning, of the, the planning board, the appeals board. And they gave him stipulations. You can do it with stipulations that need to be put into place before you can be granted. Or you can be granted, uh, I don't know, but this shouldn't be granted, um. As long as he, he follows through with the, the plan, as a, the terminology escapes me. We have another one down here where, uh, do you know that golf course? We just talked about that, right? The golf course, uh, broke off the back half, the back half of his, his lot. Because he only had a 186 feet for a road entrance onto the second lot, he couldn't do it, you need 200 feet of road frontage. So he's in front of the, the appeals board. Now, they set a contingency, that's what I wanted to say, contingency, uh, that he'd get, they would allow the 186, but based upon a, uh, survey. Not him saying, well, there's a pin there, and there's a pin there. Based upon a survey, you don't have to have a full lot survey, you can have a partial, one lot line survey. Based upon that survey findings, that no less than 186 feet, it could be 300 feet, who cares? But based upon that survey, he needed at least 186 feet of road frontage, and they would allow that. And they can do that. Just saying.
You're, you're more of the speed demon, I just want to back, I'm wanting to back.
Oh, absolutely, sure, yeah, yeah.
Golf place down here on Center?
No, of, uh, just before you get to Samper?
Oh, the mini, a mini.
The mini golf, yes, yeah, you broke off that back half and sold that. So that fell in the back, so be careful, because there's a river that runs right through his, his place, did he get close? So that fell in the back, so be careful because there's a river that runs right through his, his place, did he get close, it did? But that was all under review when he brought it to the, when he brought it to the board, made sure that everybody was aware of that, too. He has to stay seventy-five feet away from that.
Sorry, I get off track.
Oh, oh, you're fine. Not really sure how much more we can go into tonight.
You're reading up right now?
Yeah. I'm glad to know that the select boards are at least going to.
I'm trying.
Go forward with that.
Well, I do have a question from both of you, um, just to outline some of the things that we were thinking should be on the ordinance. I just wanted to see if you had any other input, um, about this, so. Explanation, definitions, land use, cultivation facilities, retail facilities, social clubs, testing facilities, products facilities, advertising, signage, advertising and signage, um, security, fire suppression, health and safety codes, and then licensing, so is there?
So we, me and Dan are working on the fire suppression and, and we're requiring, a lot of them are voluntary, as you heard, a lot of the security is mandated anyway, um, but that's mostly for security, we're thinking of the, the, um, life safety code, which we'd like to see, like to see, number one, the minimum, pull stations at every door, like to have.
I like that.
Uh, audio and visual alarms.
Motion censored? How would they work?
No, no, motion sensor, it's, it's like a strobe light on the outside of the building.
Oh, 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 okay.
Okay, what we are recommending is a tie to the fire station, so if there's a problem, any pull station, anything goes off in there, the fire department gets called right away, but that's an outside. Yeah, that's, that's an outside service that they'd have to encumber, uh, on, on these, on these new buildings. We required it from Dollar General, they, I think I mentioned this last, last night, where they tried to stay under the, under the wire. Right, so they had a ninety-eight hundred square foot building, so they weren't required by the fire marshal. But locally, locally at this level, we can be more stringent with the fire marshal, so we asked them to put the pull station, but back to their regulations, if, if, even if not, maybe, and I'm, I'm working with Dan on this, maybe, uh, depending on the size of the building, a sprinkler system. Because these, these, uh, these lights that they're putting in there generate a lot of heat. You want to talk about a flash fire.
Those halogen, halogen lights are hot.
Right, yeah, you've got the fuel for, to, to, for, um, especially inside a steel building, all that heat stays in there.
Right.
So those are all the things we're considering.
Right, and, and that's kind of where we were going with this anyways.
But I was, I was curious as to if there, if you think that there's any additional categories that we need to include.
I could give you.
This one right here, now, and I'll tell you why, which, right there.
Like, not necessarily everything that falls under these different categories, but if there's any additional things that.
I have an additional.
Think about it for a second, we talked about the second building, right, we talked about it being an attraction. What's to stop them from doing that? Nothing.
Right, absolutely.
So my other category is edibles, bakery facilities, the whole, you know, because that's a.
Well, that would go under product, under product facilities.
Okay, yeah, because it's a whole different ball of wax to do candies and, and stuff like that, that they do, just those little drops.
Yeah, health and safety, too, would also fall under products.
Because the one that they were looking, the one that they were looking at, that they were talking about in this, in this meet, in the selectments meeting that night that they come in, you weren't here, they were talking about an eighty thousand square foot facility, uh, part of that was going to be a commercial, like, for shipping out, uh, it was going to be a bakery, they were gonna create brownies and stuff like that, package them and send them out. So that's, that's what I'm talking.
Product facility under these.
But yeah, but not like little hard liquid candies, this was, was actually, they were planning a, quite a large bakery, wholesale bakery facility, so it would be going out all over the state, so.
And from my understanding, at least from what the states passed down on it, it's gonna be a lot of the, the basic health codes, if you will, for any of these facilities.
But my concern about that particular one is it was going to be in the building, with the retail center, the grow, it was an eighty thousand square foot building, it was all planned to be inside the building, the grow, the bakery, and the retail outlet were all gonna be right inside that eighty thousand, it's a big building, eighty thousand square feet.
The most, the maximum, that's the maximum.
So, that was my concern, is that I hadn't heard anybody addressing a wholesale size bakery facility.
Mike, Mike has, um, addressed that to the board, is the edibles and, and that backend, he has brought up some concerns with that and, and touched upon the health and safety aspect of, of.
Yeah, and that's really interesting to me to, you know, I mean, I'm sure that he would be right on it, but I know we don't have any ordinances that even allow for health inspections of, you know, the restaurant, you know, so, you know. Well, local, I should say, local, local ordinance.
That's not entirely true, the state is just graciously giving me another task.
Oh, we love them.
You, you don't have enough on your plate already, Mike, right?
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna need, you're gonna need some help pretty soon, because. Yes.
Yeah, stop, really stop one, that every day, yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, they, here, they like to push you to the very limit before they give you anything, but it's gonna get too big for them soon.
To make sure they're viable wings.
Yeah, yeah. Like I could use that. If it don't have, if it don't have a motor, I don't touch it. So.
And, and you know, with what she's saying, you know, that, that goes along, what do we, when we start to think about writing those ordinance and working on it, what do we allow, what do we not allow?
Yep.
Um, I mentioned earlier, I'm really not a fan of the social club idea, right now.
No, no, we have, we have one in town and everybody's screaming about it, I mean, I go there, they're very good, but everybody's, well, not a pot social club, but a, you know, a alcohol establishment, you should say, you know, and everybody's always screaming about it, they can do no right, and even if they're doing no wrong, you know.
And that's the thing, it's, it's really, it's not the fact that I'm against it completely, but we don't have the manpower in town to deal with something like that, we don't have a police force, we.
You know what I'm looking into right now, uh, it was, it was brought up because we had, I don't know if you were aware, today, we had, we had a lockdown at the town this morning.
Was, was it a drill, or was it?
No, no, this is real.
At the school?
No, here.
Here, in this building?
Yeah, we had a lockdown this morning.
Oh, Lord.
I can't name names, um.
So was the schools? Was it at both of the schools?
No, it was here, in this building.
Oh, this, okay, town hall, okay.
So, I mean, I can't go into naming names.
Just what time?
Uh, between seven thirty and eight thirty.
This morning?
Yeah.
When I hear a whoosh goes by the house.
Oh, yeah.
I don't have to hear the siren, I just hear the whoosh, I see the whoosh.
Yeah, I was wondering why they were everywhere in town today.
They, that wasn't for us, though.
Oh.
That was for a different, on, uh, Lower Bali Road, so anyway, uh, where was I going with this?
What happened? The lockdown?
It was lifted at eight thirty, I, I, I can't go into detail.
You can't say why there was a, a lockdown, because you know, now I have to call everybody in town to find out if you don't tell me. Oh, Lord.
I can't, I can't.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate that.
Okay, well, it, it involves further litigation, so.
May I ask, so, so who was the one that responded? Was it York County sheriffs?
That's where I was going with this, so, no, I called the state police.
State police.
Okay.
Yeah, and I had a conversation with them.
How long did it take them to respond?
They didn't, so.
They didn't respond?
They didn't, and I will tell you, well, let me get back to, on track with the, and that's what brought me to the, the lockdown was, we pay a fee to York County, to York County, part of that, that is a substantial amount, but what does that, what does that buy us? Does it buy us a sheriff who's more readily available than the state police? See, you can't blame the state police, they're not funded to take care of our local.
We used to have both. We used to have both, and it was an agreement between the sheriff's department and the state police, that the state police would monitor, they, there are a few other towns.
Sure, someone got shot.
The sheriff took some, the state police took some, and that's there, we got state police.
And, and if someone got shot, domestic bomb, not being covered. It may take maybe three or four hours.
Yes.
For someone to show, yeah, for someone to show up, and I have been witness, I've, I've had to call state police to escort me in places and I've had to wait.
We just had an incident on New Bridge Road the other day, and our responders had to wait, it was fifty-something minutes for the state police to come clear a scene, so they could go in and take care of a patient that was bleeding.
It should, it, because they're not funded to do that, it's because they don't want to do that.
Right.
They're not funded to take care of the local, the local, what would be the local, uh, enforcement.
Right.
So, what I'm looking into is to find out what York County, what we pay for, is, are any of those services included like a sheriff?
No.
Okay, that's what I was afraid it was gonna happen.
Sheriff.
I know that some towns, what they do is, they'll share a, uh, and fund a, a sheriff to cover.
We, we were headed that direction at one time.
Right, that's what I understand.
And they didn't want to fund it.
Right, because it's something like fifty thousand dollars, I, which I, I can't see.
I know which one we're covering.
Exactly, right.
We had a constable here in town for a while, too.
The plates, the action plates in the area, yeah, so, um, now that, I mean, I think that that's the end result, is what I'm gonna find, what Paul just recited, that no. So we may want to consider, in light of, in light of what we're about to take on with the marijuana thing, because we've seen the violence already with the, with some establishments in town now.
And those are radical, it's not even like.
Right.
Correct, so we go recreational, um, and I, I know you're against it, but if they do do that, you know, you don't, you just don't know what you're gonna draw in.
What, what do you mean, I'm sorry?
The social clubs, social clubs.
Even on a retail store, you, you don't know, I mean, because New Hampshire's not, not going recreational at this time.
There's been stabbings and things in town, uh, associated with those, those sites.
Well, at the, um, law enforcement level, you, I suppose, would have to take into consideration, we're already paying, paying for the service, at what point is the service outside of the town gonna become more expensive than bringing it into town?
Pretty much.
At the expense of a life rather than a dollar.
Right, but, well, not only that, but if there, if crime raises because of recreational marijuana use and York County sheriffs or the state police need to respond, respond more readily, we're gonna get charged for that. So, how, at what point does the cost of responding to every one of these criminal activities outweigh the cost for having somebody?
Right, I understand, I understand.
The revenue that we're gonna get from the establishment.
You're really not making anything because you're paying for people to come in.
I mean, it's theoretical, I mean, there's no way to tell if, you know, crime is gonna raise or anything like that, it's purely theoretical, but knowing the trend that's going on.
It would, you have to be really creative.
Three things you gotta find out, first, will we still have this coverage if we bring a facility into town?
That's a good point, Paul.
Because they know it's gonna be a greater workload, are they willing to?
That's a good point.
Still do that. Well, secondly, if we're arguing with that, please to, and in so many words, and this is a common, the being, I would guess, if we're gonna bring that back, then people should be knowing that before we go too far over this marijuana thing, because that, that's a big expense.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's something that, it's like, like we said before, it's a lot of things that nobody's ever thought about.
Yeah.
That went through with this bill.
And why would you?
There's an income coming in, but there's gonna definitely be an income going out, and you might still, still be edible, and you might not be edible, we don't know.
Good point, Paul.
And that's why we need all different minds, is there all different perspectives that are tied right into it?
It's just about this workshop, right?
Well, it's why I had the last piece of property at times, because it built up to the point where it was, oop, we're not gonna pay that money anymore.
Right.
Right.
The revenue sharing, or not revenue sharing, there was some type of program that was going in the government at the time, that they funded at least a family for two or three years, and then they, they cut off their, their funding.
Right.
And when that happened, the town saw the full bill, it's like, oops, we don't want that.
Well, I'll say this much, just looking at this whole comprehensive plan and seeing the data sets for.
Yeah, this place in here.
Exactly, for the, the data sets and the increase in calls.
Yeah.
From eighty-nine, or the early eighties to the nineties, it was phenomenal, I mean, even for a small community, you were talking about five thousand calls for approximately six thousand people, you know, at the time, per year, per year, but still.
I have a full blown police top in my town.
I know you do.
My, my budget's a million, almost a million dollars a year.
There goes our revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you don't have to have what I have.
No. But.
I have, I have nine offices, I have six cruises, I mean, I got it all.
And you got six brand new cruises, and all brand new equipment, and all brand new DOT equipment, crazy, everything's brand new in your town, yeah.
Now that they brought up the speed, I mean, we brought them up to this plateau, but anyway, it, it, and it comes down to how busy a police station can be, spend a day down there, and I'll show you how busy it can be, and they give us a report of the arrests, DWIs, uh, all, all their, their SOPs.
Well, just thinking what Daniel's now saying, how much his work is pretty typical of last year.
Who?
Dan.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, I mean, just the increase in calls that he's seen.
Yes.
In his life.
Yes.
Not counting all the times that, all the domestic things, that are not being covered.
Right.
That he would be involved in, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's, there's a lot to, to do.
It's life safety, and they, they choose to have it or choose not to have it, that's what it comes down to.
And you can't complain about it if you.
Exactly.
I guess what I'm getting back to is the fact that you probably need that public hearing, maybe not in the school, you give it head to ear or something, just to throw.
You have to be very careful here, because of the number of people.
What we're, what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Should it be a reason why we couldn't use the school?
Probably more moving to do the library.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to use the school, this is too small.
Right, way too.
There should be a reason why you couldn't.
Yeah, I agree, I think we would want to use the school.
Yeah, after the.
Yeah, you couldn't do it here because between here and the lobby, I mean, I think you're only a lot, like, what, a total of thirty, thirty-six.
Seventeen and a third people here.
A twenty-something out there, right? A twenty-something out there, I mean, I think it's only thirty, thirty-seven people between here and the lobby, you'd get more than thirty-seven.
The layout's all wrong anyway, you couldn't speak, you know, it's, it's just a bad layout.
Yeah. I think they would have to do a school.
Yeah, absolutely, because you have forty to fifty to sixty people sometimes, you know, because of this.
And I think that the meeting would, it has to come sooner rather than later.
I'd just be sure, because Sean's right, the social club is something that we need to consider, I'm not anxious to see that come to town, but if the majority of the people are.
Then there's really nothing.
We need to know that.
Right.
What do you mean?
You got people coming from modesty?
No, does it matter?
It can come from anywhere.
They, it would be just like, it would be just like a bar, it would be like somebody from New Hampshire going to Trains to have a drink. As long as they're twenty-one, they can drink on premise.
Isn't there enough problems in that, with accidents and stuff?
And that's, that's my point, and that, that's why, to me, I'm, I will be an advocate against social clubs, at least until Maine has some data set to it.
And I've got, him and I have gone rounds on this, because there's, you know, some other perspectives that I have on it, too, like, why wouldn't, there's a potential for a small business to open up there, and I totally see his points, but at the same time, I also see that having a retail store, having a cultivation facility might be restrictive for certain, um, what is that? Money class, or certain people wouldn't be able to open up a cultivation facility or, you know, retail store, you have to have a significant amount of money in pocket in order to do that, so a social club would be a way for somebody that doesn't have a nest egg to make some money off of it, too. But at the same time, you know, what's your risk per benefit at that point?
Right, because there's certainly a revenue to be made there, number one.
And not only for us, but for small businesses, of course, too.
Right, right, so, it, it, what does that do, that increases the business, like. That increases the business liabilities in this town. It, don't forget, it can be controlled within the town municipality, too.
And that was my point, yeah.
Yes.
Does it do well?
But at the same time, there, there is a big risk, there's a lot of things to consider with the social clubs.
Again, I've probably made the same point like three or four times now, but I don't think a social club is a good idea for eleven and a half this time. Now, if we want to have people come in that wanna do grow facilities, I can understand that. If we wanna have a store that pops up on two oh two to sell some of the merchandise, because it's not like you're gonna be able to go to a convenience store and get a pack of Mary Janes, you know? It's like that, Mary Janes.
Those, those are terrible.
Pot cigarettes. Right, pot cigarettes, right?
Also slave.
I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, so it, it's not at that level in the state of Maine. So there are gonna be people that want to build a retail outlet right on two oh two simply because of the fact of where it's located, the revenue that can be driven to it from Milton, from Rochester.
Sanford.
Sanford. Sanford, I, I've heard stories of what's happening in Sanford, and there's a lot of boom already there. Somebody, the fir, I, I can tell you this, in my opinion, the first person to build a retail store on two oh two here is gonna make a killing.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Straight up.
Yeah, so you have to make sure if you get a bunch of applications, you can't play favorites either, because somebody's gonna make a lot of money. So you have to make sure that whoever gets the first one, it's because of the criteria that they've presented rather than who they're related to and who their best buddy is and who their neighbor is, you know?
And the first cultivation facility and the, the first retail store that pops up in town, too, I think needs to serve as the gold standard for the rest of them.
Absolutely.
I, I really think that they need to set the precedent for the standards that we're gonna hold all of the other ones, too.
So just so you know, so we're not behind the eight ball here, that there is a store being set up on two oh two. It's already in the making, just so you know.
Oh, boy.
It's a bombshell, huh?
But if you have a moratorium in place-
I just lost my lunch.
That puts a-
They would not be able to come, the mor, that's why I was pressing the moratorium so much, because these establishments that are under a haunted attraction or building, be pre-prepping for this, which, from a business perspective, absolutely understand. But with putting this moratorium in place, they can't come and start knocking down the door.
For a hundred and eighty days until the town decides what we want for retail establishment.
So they can start to build this building.
Right.
But they're not gonna get any approval from us. If we pass an ordinance before they finish building, then they gotta figure out, okay, what's my next plan?
If we have certain-
I'm sorry, the, the people that are pre-building here-
Don't even friggin' look at me like that, Mike. I'm telling you, I'm getting ready to sail this across the table at you.
I, I feel the people that are pre-planning this are trying to fly under the radar, which isn't right.
Right.
I'd rather have respectable gentlemen like those gentlemen that-
Well, that's why they're telling Mike that it's a haunted attraction, not a cultivation facility.
Well, I understand that, but-
I know, but this little bombshell that he just dropped here, these fellows were right in here, they were right up front, they told everything, right? And now Mike just tells us we got somebody already building a pot store on two oh two. Like, I'm really floored by that, that they didn't have the chutzpah to come and talk to people about that and let you know what they're planning. So, so do they, is that what happens in town? Nobody talks about it? Well, so I'm asking you. Is that-
When the time was right, we have invitations from every one of them.
So why doesn't anybody know but you that there's invitations?
So when we finally get our, our stuff together, you know, we have stuff on paper, they have, they have, all of them have invited this board, select board, to do a visit. Can you shut that off for a minute?
Yeah.